I'd like to go ahead and call the committee's order. Let's join in the sacred pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. DeHaiden, I'd ask that you call the roll, please.
Georgia Holmes, President.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Barton Meyer. Harleen Kane.
Here.
Sam Powers.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Carol Ann Swartewok. Skylar Wetzel.
Here.
Okay, we do have a forum. Again, would remind everyone tonight, we do not have microphones and you have one individual on the telephone, please speak up. Would also, at this time, remind everybody if there is any conflict of interest that anyone has on any of the items that we're voting on tonight, please make that known prior to voting. And I would like to ask for a change in the agenda to move the executive session to after committee reports. With that, I'd accept a motion to approve the agenda with the change I mentioned.
I'm opposed to approve of the change.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded to approve the agenda, and that would be moving the executive session to after committee reports. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You have a copy of the minutes for the January 2nd council meeting. I'd accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the January 2nd council meeting.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in seconded to approve those minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes are approved. Have in your packages bills in between for $107,316.42, I'd accept a motion to approve those bills in between.
I'm opposed to approve the bills in between.
It been, you have a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded.
I'm sorry, I haven't made a motion. Oh, stop.
Pardon?
Who made the motion?
Ron.
Thank you, sorry.
Sorry. Been moved in seconded to approve the bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry. You also have in your packages the current claims as indicated on the agenda for minus $27,094.30 and the $2,017 accounts payable claims of $112,882.30, and the current claims is $27,024.30.
I have a change to those numbers.
Okay, and Ms. DeHaiden, if you could give us the change, please.
In total, your claims equal the same, but they're on page one of the current claims, which they pay CC011618 in the batch name, $4.09 payable to Sunny's is actually a 2017, so it's a 2017 payment, so it's going into the accounts payable claims. So your dollar amounts change from to the current place of $27,090.21, decrease of $4.09, and your accounts payable claims increase to $112,886.39.
Did everyone get that? Okay, do I have a motion to approve those claims as suggested?
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims for $27,090.21 and $2,017 accounts payable claims for $112,886.39.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded to approve the current claims. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Those current claims are approved. Communications from the public, I'd like to start off then recognizing our newly awarded three-star library here in Hot Springs. This is a national award given by the, what is it, the American Library Association.
Yes.
And what they've done is they've developed an empirical way of measuring a library's effectiveness and their value to a community. So it's not just something that's given warm fuzzies or because you've got a nice building or a friend that smiles at the door. It's actual a measurement of what libraries consider the best way to serve the community. So it's based on metrics, and it's a per capita measurement of how well it serves the community in such areas as circulation, number of library visits, how much and how well it's used by the community, total program attendance, and public internet use and things like that. And we've been fortunate enough because we do have an outstanding staff that concentrates on providing great service for our community. And so at this time dawn, I'd like to have you stand up and take a bow and then want to come shake your hand.
That's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I don't know if you've got any comments.
Um, I do. I, I wanted the staff to attend because it's, it's all of us that, that have made up the library the great place that it is to come to every day. But they're still on the job. The library on Two Seashore closes at seven o'clock, and they're on the clock till seven thirty taking care of closing, closing duties and getting things ready for tomorrow. But yes, I wanted to have them here, and I certainly will forward the congratulations. They all know that, how proud I am of them. I had one patron today. We just today changed over some computer systems, so we had to work out some bugs. And this young man, he, he was having trouble, his mouse wouldn't click like it was supposed to. And he says, he says, he said, "Let me help you with that." He says, "No," he says, "you go get Amanda," he says, "because she's the girl." She's the girl. She's the one that can fix this. And I said, "I'll go get her because she needs to know just how important she is." And she did, she worked out all the bugs, and we got everything all good today. But I am proud of our staff. The numbers that they're using, obviously are not 2017 numbers, I haven't turned those in yet, they're due, they're due in a few weeks, so I'll be working on those numbers. This is from 2015, and so I want to give some credit to the past life burdens and messenger Taylor, because part of that year she was working in, part of that year was whenever I took over. I want to say that Cindy's leadership in, in bringing the staff up to be the kind of people that welcome our patrons in and answer all their questions, whether it's the answer they were looking for or not, we send them away with something. That comes from Cindy, the customer service. This, she works really hard over the years to get the library at this level, and I really hope in the next couple of years that, that service reflects in the ALA awarding us more Star Library Awards. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other communications from the public? Hearing none, let's move on to personnel, and I'd accept a motion to approve personnel actions A through U.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept personnel actions A through U.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded that we approve those personnel actions A through U. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Those actions are approved. Committee reports, we do not have Carol Ann here tonight, there was not a administrative finance meeting. Airport Advisory Committee, Georgia.
There was no meeting since the last report. There will be none this month because everything's gone.
Okay.
However, I think we have some business we're going to take care of. We need to know the DOT recommends powers to proceed for any consultant.
Okay.
That's basically all it asks.
Okay, thank you. Custer Fall River Waste Management, Ron.
We met, excuse me, here again, met January 11th, 2018, 7:00 PM here at the Mueller Center. We're approval of amendments, Treasury report, bank accounts, power story, 20-year-old, approved the 2018 budget for the operation of the landfill, and had a permit renewed, I mean, accepted the conditions and stuff of the permit renewal for the next five years of operation of the landfill. Had a report from Barker's on the daily, moved out, and it's going through. Next meeting will be March 8th, 2018, at the end of the term.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Down town Historic Preservation Commission, and again, Carol Ann is not here. Kim, did you have anything to add to that?
I did, just so that people can start marking their calendars, on March 15th, the state of South Dakota is coming here to have a public hearing. We needed to update the historic district boundaries because when it was done in the seventies, there was improper mapping and some improper legal descriptions. So we're just taking this as a moment to pause, get everything corrected and up to date. We're really not changing anything per se, but just correcting things as it was back in the 1970s when it was approved. But look for the public hearing, it'll be here, like I said, March 15th at seven o'clock, and you'll see flyers out and look at our Facebook page for information on that, and we'll be posting that also on our website.
Thank you, Kim. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Skylar.
The closure date has been set for this launch for January 29th through February 9th, and our next meeting will be a close meeting on January 18th.
Okay, thank you very much. Parks Recreation and Beautification, Marty is not here, and I don't believe there's been a meeting or anything to report in that area. Planning the zoning commission, Harleen.
The planning and zoning meeting will be held tomorrow night at seven o'clock at the Cigron.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety, Bob.
The next public safety meeting will be tomorrow, two o'clock at City Hall.
Okay, Public Works.
The last Public Works meeting was at City Hall, January 9th. Mayor Cotte, Tracy, Kim, and myself are present. We have quite a list of old business items here to bring the council up to date on. We've been following the sewer backup on one of our private residences. The monitoring of screens that were fabricated by the sewer department catch any unapproved waste that may be entering the sewer stream on Houston Avenue is proving effective. Tracy is working on the design plans to upgrade the sewer line and is also working on the necessary easements. The chicken in the brush pile, something that's been going on quite a while. A memorandum of understanding is currently being worked on with a potential contractor to convert the waste piles to the landfill to outchar. This has taken longer than anticipated, and Public Works Committee is concerned with the 2018 growing season not far away, a solution that current waste piles needs to be in place before that spring growing season begins. So we'll keep following that up very closely. We had a double water, a request from a resident to stop the double water billing at 902 Galveston. We agreed to do that back in June or July, and only charged them for one of the two meters. But that resident was also asked to install a second curb stop by the first of January, which has not happened. Now the city, so the city will begin building for those two water meters, starting this one. Conversion of the city solar, city locations to solar, Black Hills Power and Light has also been contacted about the possibility of converting city goals to solar, and they want to talk to us about that. The, the hiring of an engineering firm for the Canada River Sidewalk along North River Street. Mayor Cotte has had a discussion with the South Dakota State, South Dakota School of Mines to see if they would be interested in designing the Canada River Sidewalk along North River Street. We also talked about adding some additional lighting at the Valley View Road, just a little south of town. Kim's going to talk, contact Black Hills Power and Light to see what costs for installation, that might be, provide better lighting for the Valley View Road entrance. We also talked about some work that's going to be taking place in the sewer department to remove corrosion on the moles and the wet mold cover, and the digester has also been added to that, the digester will be the, will jump up to the top of the list to be the first item that we'll be looking at. We talked about the water user's ditch behind Hills Inn, Hills Inn is leaking and needs to be looked at. Currently, that ditch doesn't have any water in it, so it's a little difficult to determine where a leak might be coming from and who's responsible for that. So when the ditch is filled with water in the spring, then we'll look at that again and see if there is any action that's necessary by the city or if that's private property. We had a request for a refund of the water bill on 1942 Anderson University Avenue. The user requested refund because they filled it and overbilled for, because of defective water meter. The city water department replaced the water meter in question, tested the meter at the city shop, and then installed the meter at the city hall. Testing of the water meter didn't show the meter was defective, so no refund of water charges is recommended. The update on the Pete Lee, Pete Lee and Sons' contract, the council previously approved, hiring a lawyer to take a look at that contract, and lawyer currently has it and is reviewing the contract. The next Public Works meeting will be January 23rd, two o'clock at City Hall.
Thanks, Bob, and just a couple of updates subsequent to those, that meeting, we have received an outline of the temporary agreement profile of ours, so that is proceeding ahead. And also on the area of the solar project, we've been working with the South Dakota Municipal League to get some legislation changed to allow the financing to extend past ten years to twenty years, which would give us more favorable rate of return on our investment for solar energy. And they have taken that and will be submitting legislation to get that changed. And I just wanted to give the council an update on that. Again, we will be meeting, as Bob said, with Black Hills Energy also.
How close do you have that, do you have a schedule with Black Hills Energy?
Yeah, we do, let me.
Next Tuesday.
On the 23rd.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, moving on, Southern Hills Economic Development, Georgia.
Uh, there's, hasn't been a meeting, but the 29th is the annual get-together.
Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, Skylar.
Our next meeting will be February 12th.
Okay, thank you. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron.
We met ninth of January at the fire hall. We had expense reports approved, finance reports approved, had a vote to accept a new firefighter named Scott Hall, who's approved of water provision, unanimous vote, first time ever, they said. Working on a grant for a new GRL-1 truck, also working on a FEMA grant for new radios over the next several years, so all firefighters will have radios. I didn't have any fan. The annual recognition banquet slash dinner is January 20th at the Legion Post 71 at 7:00 PM. They also discussed Cascade Volunteer Fire Department, which is what their responsibility can be, as Cascade is extremely under manned, I guess, so they're, they're gonna, they're making, they have the plan, and to cover for that, I'll tell them, thank you. And most of the attorney's terms.
Okay, thank you, Ron. And Comprehensive Plan Coordination, Sam.
We last met on January 11th. Me and Administrator Barbieri discussed the Miss South Dakota Pageant, possibly leaving Hot Springs for other venues, and alternative uses for the Mueller Center, alternative ones that come, such as contacting Rule A, the Native American Performance Troupe. We are going to do a public display, we're thinking of putting that together to gauge the, the mood of the public, as well as gather additional input into other things we could use the Mueller Center for after that leaves. We also discussed the sustainability section of the comp plan, this was a section put together entirely by local members in the public, which included things like local food production, alternative energy production, and transportation through the city of Hot Springs. We also spoke about reducing pollution and encouraging recycling through means such as labeling storm drains as drainage to the river, placing central recycling receptacles in public areas to make it easier for residents to recycle, and educating our local population in sustainability, recycling, pollution, and other topics to spread awareness of responsible stewardship of our natural resources. Our next meeting will be on January 17th, which is Bob.
Okay, thanks, Sam. At this time, I would accept a motion to go into executive session.
I have a question, why don't you do that?
Okay, go ahead.
What applies, what she means by closed meeting, does that mean it's all with you?
Yeah.
Come to that meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it probably is discussing, shut that.
That's all we're talking, that's all we're talking about, is just the closure, because it got pushed to the end at the last meeting, and we really didn't get to do business, so.
Thank you. Accept a motion for going into executive session, please.
I'll make a motion to executive session.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, we adjourn to go into executive session, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we'll go into executive session at some point. Georgia. Moving on in the agenda, you'll notice item A, that I, as Mayor of Hot Springs, vetoed Resolution 2018-2. You have a package of my letter in your, you have a copy of my letter in your packages. If there's anyone on the council that desires to override that veto, you may make a motion to see if that effect at this time. Hearing no motion, the veto will stand, we'll move on to item B. Looking at Resolution 2018-2 revised, the designation of depositories and official newspaper. You have that, copy of that resolution in your packages, and that would be naming the Hot Springs Star as official newspaper of Hot Springs. And let me explain to the public why this all came about. We're facing Goliath, big corporation, and their attorneys researched the law and determined that, through much confusion, that our attorney went through and determined that a newspaper to be declared, the official newspaper of the community has to have publication office and mailing permit in the community that it's representing. It did not, we decided we did not want to fight that legally. Obviously, we didn't have the stones to fling at that Goliath, and that's the reason, on the advice of our attorney, that I made the veto and the reason that we're considering naming the Hot Springs Star as our official newspaper. So at this time, I would accept a motion to, approving Resolution 2018-2.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2018-2 revised, designation of depositories and official newspaper.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, and we do accept that designation, and the Hot Springs Star has the official newspaper. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion?
I was just going to note that was the only change we had on the presentation, is it has on there the Bank of the West, First State Bank, Wells Parkville Bank, that being a possible.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I just wanted to make a comment, that it's disappointing that we find ourselves in this situation.
Any other comments or? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Also have in your package a resolution to approve a 2018 Angostura Irrigation District Water Service Contract. I would accept a motion to approve that resolution at this time.
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 2018-4 for the Angostura Irrigation District Water Service Contract for the amount of $4,823.10 in capacity of the city of Hot Springs.
Okay, here's a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded that we had not Resolution 2018-4. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
I'll make a comment, I know we discussed this once before, it's a lot of money, we have the rights for the water, and don't use it. It's kind of an expense that we might look at as something we don't need, but once you don't accept it, you lose it forever, and if it's something you might use, that is important.
Okay, and I would concur, it is an expense that in the future we may need, it may become a part of need for best control during the peak lean and sun's mean, I mean, means of providing opportunity for that, and if in the future we do need that water for industrial purposes as we expand out at the airport, that might be a possibility. But as for now, it's a place holder for us to reserve those water rights, which are important in our, our climate. Any other comments or discussion?
How much does it cost?
Yes, go ahead, please.
What time, what time, I know we talked about.
Would you please stand and?
Yeah. Volume.
Yes, thank you.
How much, how much is the cost for this thing?
$4,823.10 in capacity.
Keep it.
What, more cost than that much?
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move on to new business, we have a possible motion and discussion to approve Quinn Construction Change Order Number Two on the Boulder Falls Street Improvement Project resulting in a decrease of $51,252.50 due to a final quantities used adjustment. So again, I want to stress and highlight that is a decrease of $51,000 and some odd dollars.
I'll make a motion to, to accept that change in, in your order number two on the Boulder Falls Street Improvement Project for $51,252.50 for the final quantities.
Could someone please second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do approve that change order to decrease that amount. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Again, this highlights the excellent job that Quinn Construction did, and the excellent job that our city engineer did in planting and designing and estimating. job that our city engineer did in planning and designing and estimating the quantities to be used, so very, very kudos to them. Hearing no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have a possible motion and discussion to set a public hearing on 5th of February at 7:10 P.M. to act on the application for retail on and off sale beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License to be used at 323 South Chicago Street by changing seasons for, again, this is a fairly recently new business on South Chicago, and I would accept the motion to set that public hearing.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing on February 5th, 2018, at 7:10 P.M. to act on the application for retail on and off salt city home beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License to be used at 323 South Chicago Street by changing seasons for.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we set that public hearing. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a possible motion and discussion in item C to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from the Hot Springs Fault to be used at the Miss South Dakota Runway Show will be held on February 10th here at the Mueller Civic Center.
I'll make a motion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from the Hot Springs Fault to be used at the Miss South Dakota Runway Show on February 10th, 2018 at the Mueller Civic Center.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that temporary alcoholic beverage license. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a possible motion and discussion to approve a Toro NSN. This is an irrigation controller support network, essential 36-month agreement, monthly or lump sum option. This is for the golf course irrigation network, and I would accept the motion at that time to approve that controller.
I'll make a motion to approve the Toro NSN Irrigation Controller Support Network, essential 36-month agreement, monthly or lump sum option.
Please choose.
Monthly? A central 36-month agreement, monthly.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this on a monthly option. You have both options listed there in your package. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and I believe you made that motion, Bob, after Bobby or Jason today, I know he couldn't give you the.
Yes. As he had mentioned to his, in his letter to us, this is a service he currently has, it's oversight on his part that wasn't included in the 2018 budgets, but he does feel, as he said, if the renewed agreement is signed, the cost would be adjusted forward throughout the year by monitoring monthly expense guidelines so not to exceed the total department spending. It's going to absorb the 155 dollars a month, make it 155, a lot of his current budgets to maintain his service. It's 24 hours a day, seven days a week, tech support, equipment replacement for his irrigation with Charlie Town. I think it's important for him to have.
I think it's made a big difference.
Yes.
I think it's made a big difference for them.
It's good investment. Does save man hours because if they don't have an automatic system, it requires. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor to approve the irrigation controller system network on the monthly option signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a possible motion and discussion to approve a contract for services with Premier Pyrotechnics, and this would either be a one-year contract or a three-year contract. Whichever the council decides.
Historically, the city doesn't, just each year, and this year, they were offered a 5% increase in merchandise if we sign a three-year, which is why you're being presented with those options.
What is the recommendation of the Finance Department?
One year. I'll make a motion when we do it for one year for the services of the Premier Pyrotechnics contract.
Okay, for a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve a one-year contract for services with Premier Pyrotechnics. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We have a motion and possible discussion to advertise for proposals for an Air Force Consulting Engineering Services. We currently have hired S.H.E., they're not located nearby, and one of their contract is coming due, and it's a recommendation of the Airport Advisory Commission that we advertise for proposals to see if we can get, if we can restate or get a new contractor to provide those consulting services. I'd accept the motion to advertise those proposals.
I'll make a motion to advertise for the proposal for the Air Force Consulting Engineering Services and make a, set up committee for that.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we advertise for proposals for the Air Force Consulting Engineering Services. Are there any discussion?
Should I add, yes, that committee for that?
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Kim, you'll be working with Tracy to get the RFP out from this. Thank you. We also have in your packages a travel request form for our head librarian, Don Johnson, to attend the South Dakota Library Association Jump Start Training Workshop in Pierce in February. I'd accept the motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to accept the request for Don Johnson to travel to Pierce, South Dakota for Jump Start Training and Workshop.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that travel request. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I did talk to Don about that a little bit today, and Mr. South Dakota has had it to be a place to hear again because they're not doing their customer needs. This is great.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also have in your packages a travel request from Chief of Police Mike Close to attend a crisis intervention team training in Sioux Falls in March 26th through the 30th. Again, this is, I think, a very valuable training opportunity, and I accept the motion for approving that travel request for Chief Close.
I'll make a motion for the travel request of Chief of Police Mike Close to attend the crisis intervention team training in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, March 26th through the 30th.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to allow Chief Close to attend that training in Sioux Falls. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none?
Oh, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I'm always for getting training for city employees looking at this particular one. I'm going to vote to approve it, I'll say that upfront, but I do have some concerns about the travel costs. This early on in the year, to rounding up, taking almost a third of the budget for this long training request, I'd like to see if there's some way that we might be able to reduce those costs, and that might be possible by using a city vehicle versus private transportation. Tomorrow, we do have a public safety meeting, so it's an opportunity to talk with Chief Close about it. He said I'm going to vote for it, but I'd like to see if maybe there's some way we can get the costs reduced by the end of approving close to $1,000 of this $3,000 training budget this early in the year. I'd like to try to keep as much of that there as possible.
Okay, good, a very good point, Bob. Are there any other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving that travel request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, Misty, can you give us a report to the Finance Office, please?
Sure. Financial reports, I don't have a second meeting in this month, but I do have this little summary of what's been going on in our office. I did pass out two here, '72s, we got those done for 2017, and '1099 as well this week. Also, the city email instructions we passed at the last council meeting that all council members who use are at hsdsv.org, exchange for emails, and we have the instructions now. We're going to begin using those effective Monday, so that gives you a few days to follow those instructions, get it set up, and make sure that you can access that. On the instructions, our IT individual, Brian, left his phone number on there for you. If you're having trouble getting it set up, feel free to call. But come Monday, we'll be sending all communications to those emails, and on our website, it's already been updated. If they click on your email, you have to go over that email address. We're preparing, believe it or not, for 2018 elections already, starting February 15th. We'll have the notice of vacancies published in the paper, those need to be published two times, and then we believe the date is March 1st. More to come next month. I have a date for sure where you can begin circulating nominating positions. We'll have council board seats in 1, 2, 3, and 4, and a mayor race on the ballot. Well, we'll have them up. Maybe they'll be on the ballot, maybe they won't. Georgia in Ward 1, Skyler in Ward 2, Carol Ann in Ward 3, and Bob in Ward 4. Council seats that will be up. We did just start the 93rd South Dakota Legislative Session. We get updates, the city, if any of you are interested in receiving those updates, I'd be happy to forward them to you. There's been 138 bills introduced so far, that's as of the 12th. There's eight municipal league bills. We are working, currently finalizing 2017, so that at the March 1st meeting, you can have your annual report for 2017, and working on accruing payrolls. This role that we're processing this week will be the last two days of 2017. And then, as you continue to see accounts cable on your plates, know that there's also revenues that we're recognizing this month that go back into 2017. So, March 1st is a, it seems three months off is a long time, but it's really a tight deadline when you're still accepting money and making payments that go back into the last period. So, by the first meeting in March, we'll have an annual report for you from 2017. We have been looking at our website, update, the 2018 summer rent packets will be coming in the next two to three months. We're scheduling our dates for the cleanups for 2018, so the website will have that information coming soon. On the next agenda, you'll be seeing the selection of some golf carts. We talked about it's ledge time leasing in golf carts, and so we're working on a couple options for that that will be recommended by the Golf Course Advisory Committee, I believe, and our managers at the Golf Course. You'll have that on your agenda to review, read at the next meeting. In the Finance Office, in the last couple weeks, we've completed our 2017 performance evaluations. I'm glad to have that started again. We skip that in at the end of 2016, beginning 2017. It's a good time to sit down and review what happened in 2017, and then also set some goals for 2018. And I just want to let you all know that the Finance Office staff that I've worked with is probably some of the best folks I've ever worked with. They have a number of years combined experience, and one of the things that I can say is true of these ladies that work in the office, Barb Beckson, Mary Hardy, and Karen Bingley, that everyone carries the weight, does hard work, and is thankful for the jobs that they have and appreciative of. And so, I just want to mention their names and tell you how great I think they are to work with, and let you know that I sat down and talked to all of them about that in the last couple weeks, and make sure that they were aware. And we're working on some updates to our donation and gift policy. That will be coming on some council agendas, probably the next one, but depending on what we talk about at Admin Finance, we may put it off one more. The donation and gift policy updates are mostly just to add some guidelines around donations of like memorials, benches, trees, really anything, anyone wants to designate as a memorial donation, we're adding some clarification on that. Working on some liability waivers for our airport based on recommendations of our insurers. So, our attorneys are reviewing a couple things now, and I've been working with our full-time airport manager on lease agreements and some waivers for moving things. So, those things are to come on the next council agenda.
Hey, thank you, Misty. And Skyler, do you have the capability to update your email address?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great.
I sent it to her today.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the city administrative report.
Well, we've been, I've been pretty busy this couple months here. The most recent is that we're moving ahead with our development coordinator position. We had 31 applications, we narrowed it down to seven now. The questions for, that we sent out to our applicants came in, they were due yesterday, so we came into a fold-down box. The rest of the people getting those in are, we're doing them right now, and we're setting up our final four for, three or four, for interview at that point. Hopefully, we'll have somebody chosen by the end of the month, and then work on whether we can get them into place. The biggest thing that I've been dealing with since last meeting was under the development coordinator position, we have to do a lot of year-end closeouts. It's required by the federal government and by the county to find out our housing starts, how many permits that we did, the value of those permits and things like that. There's a number of other things. I always do a regular report for the council, just to know what we're doing in that particular department. It goes over the development coordinator position, just what I was telling you about, what we've been doing with the comprehensive plan, which I think Sam has done a real good job of getting you up to date on that. I'm hoping that we have that in public hearings before summer and get that approved so that we have a plan in place that we can actually start really moving towards. It's been entirely based on community input, which is unlike any other town in the state. So, I think a lot of kudos to our group for that. Under the building department, we increased the number of building permits. The total valuation for all of our building permits issued in 2017 was $3,267,850 as compared to 2016, with a total valuation of $1,359,803. It's an increase in value of 41% up from last year. I have it all broken down if you want to see it. We do have this at the city hall. We also started the vacant structure registry. The enrollment was through September 17th. We had only 38 vacant structures registered, two were demolished, and a number of other ones were sold or put on the market. We, once we have a new development coordinator hired, we will be working on checking down those other people that we know of that have vacant buildings that did not register at this point. I just, one thing too many. Code enforcement summarized, there were actions on 53 properties. Code enforcement summarized, there were actions on 53 properties, full cleanups executed on four properties, and one corcaped, one and one started. Then we went in with a flood plane, we still have a process to work with that, that we have completed by this break of 2018. You'll be hearing more about that in the future. Other things that I've been working on, one of the things that I got full base front hold on with this position is how much of the job is doing advertisement for Evans Plunge and Southern Hills Golf Course. There has been no advertising, this is the planner in me, there's been no advertising or planning plan. I, there's nothing out there that says, this is our goal, we're going to hit these areas, and we're going to, you know, there's nothing like that. So, as I get a constant barrage from TV stations, radio stations, print material, all those things, I'm not sure exactly at this point where I want my money to go and for what bang for the buck. So, that's one of the things I'm trying to boil down. I have meetings with three, two TV stations and one radio station on Thursday, and I'm hoping to have it done by then, so I can kind of make a plan for, you know, how I'm going to deal with all these people that want our advertising dollars. On the planning section, on that Evans Plunge closure, we're having that meeting, again, just to get our advisory board up to date on what we're doing. And then we really need to sit down and work with our advisory board to get a mission clearly identified for Evans Plunge, and start a planning process on what we intend to do with the facility. We had a public vote to purchase it, to keep it in the community, but what exactly are we doing? Every time I go to a meeting, everybody wants their piece of it, and we just can't go slicing it up without a plan. That goes also for the Mueller Center. I think the, the idea that Miss South Dakota is not shopping for other alternate locations, I think we have to be smart and start looking at what are our opportunities in that. Can, because really, this facility has been, well, we can't do that because the South Dakota needs this, or the South Dakota needs that. Well, now, what do we want to be if we don't have that one thing that's directing our facility here? So, do we want to go more business-directed? Do we want to do partnership with our local hotels and do conferences? Do we want to work a little bit more towards the recreation aspect? Or do we want to do none of the above, maybe do arts theater and something else? I have no idea. That's one of the things that we're going to be talking about in February. We're going to be trying to work up, I'm thinking it's going to be the end of February, that date is not nailed down yet. We're working with some other people on a, a public get-together to go over all of our nonprofits in the community, as to garner this kind of information, and just have a fun day networking, and try and find out what we have available here. One last one that we also need to do planning on is our street department. Again, that's another one of those pies that everybody wants a piece of, and I think we need to have a really good plan for the long term for our street department as the city grows and develops. So, those are the main things. Oh, one last thing, we just set the dates for the free dump days this year. We're going to try something new. It's going to be April 30th through May 4th. April 30th, of course, is the Monday. On Tuesday and Wednesday, that's May 1st and 2nd, we're going to have it going, instead of our normal 8 to 3, we're going to have it go 11 to 6, to try and make it available for people who have a harder time making those earlier hours with the work. That was a request that we've heard over the past three years, so we're going to just try a couple days, do it on the days that are the slowest, so that people would have that chance to get in there and get their materials dropped off. The Fall 1 will be October 22nd through the 26th, and we'll, again, on that Tuesday and Wednesday, we're going to try to have evening hours as well. We're going to work that through that, I talked with Billy, we're going to do it as a flex system, so no, there's going to be no overtime, we're just going to be starting people later and finishing later. So, there'll be no other overhead costs with that. And I think, and hopefully at the next meeting, I'll have my goals finished up, typing from our, end of December meeting. Sorry, that was a really long one, but I thought I could.
Thank you, Kim. I know you've been busy, and appreciate all the hard work and forward-looking outlook. Got, thank you. I've got a couple of items to report. First of all, I just want to update the council and the community. We did meet today with the Fall River County Commissioners. They had mentioned at one of their previous meetings a concern of the funding levels, and this council voted in budgeting towards supporting Vertile's Transit. As a part of that meeting, they had threatened to cut off some funds to the library if we would provide more funds to Vertile's Transit. Had the opportunity to sit down with them today and explain our funding issues, the things that you all went through in the budgeting process, determine our, our budget, the issues that were facing us, and the potential of lack of revenue with things like the new highway I did mention that along with the $5,000 donation that we're making, that we offered to pursue $15,000, $20,000 in time option, if they were to choose to build a bus garage here in Hot Springs, which the executive director indicated they were interested in doing, we would do that, look for an opportunity to do that at our maintenance facility, and they were unaware of that. We also pointed out that the funding by the taxpayers of Hot Springs for the county residents to use the library comes to $50,000, and the taxpayers of Hot Springs pay, so the county residents get a $5 library card, and I just wanted to make sure they were aware of that. We were cordially received, and again, agree later this spring, as we prepare for the budget, to see if there's ways that we can work together to ensure that Vertile's Transit remains here in Hot Springs, a viable option of transportation for people that need it. But I just wanted to give that report to the council, and I'm thankful for the commissioners here in the south, and the fine reception that we got. I also want to compliment our street department and maintenance crews headed by Billy Morrow. We just had a recent D E N R inspection of our solid waste operation out at our maintenance facility, and passed that inspection. And that's one of those hidden things that a lot of people don't realize, has to be maintained, level of berms, the way we dispose the oil, the way we handle the brush piles and so forth out there. It's all governed by environmental regulations, and our crews are doing an excellent job. We don't see them out there as much as we see them plowing streets and fixing potholes and so forth, so I just want to pass that compliment on to Billy, and Kim, if you make sure he gets that too, we appreciate the hard work of the crew out there. As Bob mentioned, one of the things that we were very fortunate to, very fortunate to sit next to the acting president of the School of Mines and Technology, had a recent event that I went to in Rapid City for the dedication of the Black Hills Energy Building up there, and I asked him if there'd be any possibility that any of the civil engineering students would be interested in doing a design project involving a cantilever sidewalk here in Hot Springs. And he gave me his email address, the email address of the head of the Civil Engineering Department, and we got, got in contact with, and there appears to be some interest, and hopefully that will generate into a practical design problem for those engineering students. Hate to regress, but I was once a civil engineering student at the Air Force Academy, and I remember the lessons I learned in designing an airfield. That airfield was used in Vietnam, and some of my classmates that I worked on that with had an opportunity to land on that airfield after it was built there. So, those things do add practical knowledge, you remember them, and take pride in stuff that you, you work on, and the lessons that you learn. So, I think that would be a good win-win for both Hot Springs and the School of Mines. Again, Kim, I want to reiterate, thank you very much for the thorough report on the job you did as our planning administrator, again, highlighting the $2 million increase in building permits over the past year. That's a 41% increase, which is, I think, significant, and also it's an income for our city with the $6,000 some odd dollars that we, we gain from the fees of getting those permits out. So, the other thing that has been, I've heard several compliments on, is the progress in enforcing some of the cleanup areas that we've, that you've taken care of this past summer. And again, I think that is, that needs to be noted, and again, I want to thank you very much for all the hard work in that area. That's not an easy thing to do. Finally, I want to read a letter. It's kind of an interesting situation. Letter comes from Indianapolis, Indiana, it's at Mayor Cotty. "I was reflecting on 2017 recently, and I wanted to let you know that my family trip in Hot Springs was a high one. I pray that 2018 would be a great year for your community. The good people of Hot Springs be blessed and continue to bless others as you all bless the Jacksons. Please let us know if there's anything we can do for you and your community. Sincere regards to you and to the Hot Springs residents. Signed, Wesley E. Jackson." Just wanted to give you a little background on that letter. Our police department stopped Wesley E. Jackson for speeding. Captain Wayneman was the arresting officer, and gave him a warning, and asked him to spend the money that he was paid for a police, for a speeding ticket at one of our local restaurants. And he was so impressed with the kindness that he received from Captain Wayneman, that in turn, Mr. Jackson bought a gift certificate for all the police force to enjoy coffee in one of our local establishments, and made a $100 donation to our fire works at this way. The reason I share this is because there's a big lesson. Acts of kindness have an opportunity to grow, and that's a good example of it. So, as we continue on in the year, if we can continue to be kind, I know, Bob, you have a reminder on everyone of your emails about kindness, and I think that's a good message for all of us to learn. And so, with that, I would ask that we have a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn to adjourn. Been moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.